Hi, um, okay, you're on the phone.
Ready?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we've got a question. I'm gonna call me to the county prison board. Roll call.
Sheriff Rockville.
Ready.
Controller Lally.
Here.
District Attorney Hennig. Absent. Commissioner Ibbotzini.
Present.
Commissioners Apotelski.
Present.
And Commissioners O'Malley.
Commissioner, can you hear?
Yeah. Present.
Present, my friend. If we can all stand, please, have a moment of silence. Thank you, and now we can say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody gets a meeting minutes from the line office. Anyone have any questions? Any discussion on those minutes? If not, we'll move on. Item number six, public comment. If there's anybody here from the public who wishes to speak, may now do so. If not, then we'll move on. I need approval for case of federal appeal. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I could not hear what you were saying.
I said, "public comments." If you have anything you wish to speak about or say?
No questions?
If I can answer, sure.
If they bring the tour, if we need you guys to build this prison, you can have an execution chamber. That's not a joke.
No, we're not.
My own.
That's done on a state level.
Can't you just build one and run out of time in the state?
As much as I like to for some, I can't. I'm sorry, turn it in here.
Is it forbidden by law?
Yes, uh, my understanding, yes, it has to be signed by a governor. Any other questions or discussion? If not, uh, Ward, anything outstanding for our bill of course, except that, uh, at the end of the line office?
No.
I see it's pretty lengthy.
Yeah.
That one on the front, that is monthly?
Uh...
Yes, Chair.
That's a monthly charge.
Okay, uh, is that, that figure of your rent, are in main rental for the last month? It is, yeah. Hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. That's correct. Anything else outstanding on that?
An annual break, where does that bring us, that, uh, Controller Lally?
Uh, right now, we have eight hundred and thirty thousand. We'll just go with the even number. Year-to-date, that's August the thirtieth, the hundred and forty-five thousand encompasses the month of August. Um, it puts us on track to be well over a million this year.
Thank you.
And from my understanding, that's just the out-of-county rentals, that does not include transportation costs to bring inmates to counties as far away as, uh, center counties, as they call it.
Ward, if I understand you, being first responsible for transport, is there any other prisons closer that we can put anybody other than center county?
No, that's, that's as close as we can get.
Now, we get another influx, Ward, do we have to go?
I was told we would have to go out towards Philadelphia, yeah. Thank you.
No, we're currently using, between center county and here, uh, we're using five other institutions between that, that location.
That's correct.
Between center county and here, they're filled up, so we have to continue, uh, continue to go further out to find, to find jail space.
Right now, we have prisons in Green, Bedford, Butler, Armstrong, Cambria, and center counties. You bring them back and forth for hearing consideration and take them back. Anybody have any other questions on the bill? If not, we'll move on.
I'm having a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? If not, all favorite, go move. Item number eight, Ward, the population report for September two thousand thirteen.
Uh, currently, we have two hundred and ten males, thirty-six females in-house for a combined total of two hundred and forty-six in-house. Um, you spoke about the rentals, um, I'll go down the list of our, our rentals. Um, in Armstrong County, we have one inmate. In Bedford County, we have five inmates. In Cambria County, we have five inmates. In Green County, we have ten males, nine females. In Butler County, we have thirty-four males. And in center county, we have thirteen males. For a total of sixty-eight males and nine females rented out, seventy-seven total grand
Right now, we have two hundred and forty-six inmates over here.
Yes, that's correct.
They're working every week. Do you have any idea, maybe we'll bring her back? Ballpark.
Ballpark, probably around twenty inmates.
Do we have to ship more at a time? Or do you handle those?
We can probably handle those, those inmates, but if we get anybody in, in between that time, then we'd have to ship out.
That, that would make it official, do with the numbers that you just gave, Brian, we would have exceeded a million dollar mark by the end of September, and we still have three months left to go. Does there anybody incarcerated in the Bay County prison who we ship to the state?
Right now, we haven't moved.
We're waiting all out, right?
Yeah.
Anybody have any question on the population report? If not, we'll move on. Personnel. Don't make one here.
I don't think Don is here, he knows nothing about the personnel at this time.
Nothing, no. Item number ten, Crabtree Royal Bond Associates. Who wants to speak before?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tom Crabtree, I'm president of Crabtree Royal Bond Associates. We've been asked among Slater Engineering to do an evaluation, a facility needs assessment and feasibility study associated with your current prison problem, which of course is overcrowded. With me also is Craig Zimmerman from our office. What, what has driven the problem is, was just the subject of discussion here, and that is, the fact that the county, uh, by the end of this month will have spent over a million dollars boarding inmates in other counties, not including the cost of transporting them, the additional staff that they've had to bring on to be able to transport inmates, and not including the cost of the sheriff's office transports of inmates, and, uh, and so it is, it's obviously an issue that needs to be addressed, and our task is to evaluate the situation, look, gather all the information, and develop a report to the prison board and to the commissioners, okay? So, a little bit about my background, I'm, I'm an architect and a correctional facility planner. These are, these are facilities, Lebanon County, North Hampton, Mifflin, Montgomery, Perry, Potter, all up and down Pennsylvania, that we have done this process for, that we have conducted this study information for. Sometimes these studies lead to a decision to build a new prison, sometimes these studies lead to a decision to renovate the old prison, sometimes these studies lead to a decision to keep doing what we're doing, order inmates somewhere else. It all depends on the numbers. The, the cost is what drives this process. So, so we've done it a lot, we've been doing it, I've personally been doing it for about thirty-eight years, and, um, you can contact any of these counties and talk to them about, um, the results of our efforts in those counties. Uh, what I have on the screen here is the actual study, so some of this is introduction and, and things that I'll kind of skip over, this is the index table of contents, and then there's an introduction that talks about what the process is. What we have done is a, is a multi-step process, we, we will prepare prison projections, we have prepared prison projections, we've determined the current and long-term needs of the county. How many beds do you currently need, how many beds will you need in five, ten, twenty years? Establish a building program requirements, that is, establish what spaces you need to handle the population you're gonna have. Develop options, how can you deal with those, new construction, renovation, continue to board your inmates, those are three options. We prepare cost estimates for the construction of each option, we're preparing an operating estimate, an operating cost estimate for each option, and comparing the life cycle costs of each option. In order to do that, we've conducted program interviews with representatives of the prison board, the prison working group, the prison, the district attorney, we've, we've gathered information from all of those sources, we've done a detailed field analysis, we've visited your prison, we've toured both the prison and the annex, walked through it, evaluated it, looked at what's going on, we've evaluated your existing operating procedures so that we understand how you work, how you operate, what you, what, what you do and don't do with regard to your prison. We've evaluated statistical information compiled by the Department of Corrections, compiled by Warden and his staff, and also, uh, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency and the Uniform Crime Reporting Act. We've reviewed the Pennsylvania statutory requirements, we've reviewed your reports that the Department of Correction prepares on a monthly basis as a result of their inspection, and we've reviewed your facility as it compares to the American Correctional Association standards for adult local detention centers. The American Correctional Association is a nationally accepted standard that sort of measures your facility, uh, against a constitutional standard. It's, it's sort of a, a guideline for you to try to operate within the standards so that you are not exposed to litigation associated with, uh, constitutional issues. We've evaluated the existing conditions in your prison. This is the rated capacity of your prison. This is not what you have in the way of beds today, but if we apply the basic standards of square footage per bed, number of toilets, number of showers per inmate, those kinds of things, we come up with a rated capacity of your facility of two hundred and thirty-nine. Now, you just heard you have over two hundred and forty, and you operate today, a current utilization, an operating capacity of two hundred and sixty-two beds. So, the two hundred and thirty-nine is what, let's say, the facility could reasonably be expected to accommodate in terms of the number of beds, two sixty-two is where you're operating. The current utilization, the two sixty-two, falls a hundred and ten beds short of the average daily population of the prison in July of two thousand and thirteen. The average daily population is, is a statistic that tells you just what it sounds like, what is the average population for the month of July in your jail. And the average daily population in your prison was a hundred and ten beds, or a hundred and ten inmates, more than your capacity of two hundred and sixty-two. That was the month of July, okay? The rated capacity, that is, the smaller capacity of what you should be operating, falls a hundred and thirty-three beds short of your actual July average daily population, We've got drawings of the existing facility, we've analyzed, of course, this is, this is your existing complex, the prison, the courthouse, the courthouse annex, parking facilities, the boiler building. We've done drawings that depict the square footage, the size, configuration of your existing building, just to have a reference point as to, as to what you have, what that asset is. The existing building is about thirty-three thousand square feet of space, okay? And, and that's an important number to remember as we start talking about what you need in the way of space. We've done a building condition summary, the existing prison, basically, all of the systems in the prison have outlived their useful life, the boilers, the electrical system, the water distribution system, the plumbing, basically, everything in the prison is original to a renovation that was done in the nineteen, early nineteen sixties, okay? So, so everything that you've got in there is nineteen sixty-two, is about fifty-some years old. So, we would use fifty years as a useful life of many of those systems. So, you, you've got systems that are, that are on their last legs. Those systems that are outdated include food service facilities, the building is not ADA compliance, or you're exposed to a lawsuit on accessibility in, in the facility, public space is not adequate, administrative space is not adequate, staff support space is not adequate, basically, every square foot of the prison that's available has got bunks in it right now. Um, I mean, you go up and down the stairways in, in the facility, and everywhere you turn, there's a room with bunks in it. And so, all of the things that you need to operate a prison are no longer there to operate the prison, they're there to house those additional bunks that you've, you've put in to place. You also have an annex, the annex is not in terrible condition, it was built as a, sort of a, a temporary measure about ten or so years ago, uh, two thousand and two. There are some ADA issues with the annex, but basically, the annex is a big dormitory building. You have increased the capacity of the annex from its original design capacity of seventy to eight, so you've added bunks to the annex. One of the things that we always do is, what would be the cost to upgrade the facility to meet current standards, meet current code? This doesn't make it any bigger, this doesn't add any beds, this simply is what you need to do to continue to operate the way you are, okay? So, this, this includes renovations, heating system replacement, water pipe replacement, lighting system upgrades, fire protection installation, all of the security system renovations, all of the things that should be done to that building if you're gonna continue to use it as a prison, okay? And that cost, which is just the cost of renovating those existing thirty-three thousand square feet, is seven million and eighteen thousand dollars, okay? I'm not suggesting you do that, but it's important to know this, that if you're gonna continue to operate, just to bring it up to code, just to bring it up to current standards, that, that is a cost. Also, the annex has some work that needs to be done, about three hundred thousand dollars worth of ADA work and security systems upgrades, if you're gonna continue to operate it. So, I want to make an important note, this red note here, renovation of the existing prison and annex to meet current building codes, ADA requirements and correctional standards, will yield a maximum total of two hundred and thirty-nine beds. If you renovate it and you bring it up to standard, you'll have two hundred and thirty-nine beds available to you. This bed count falls a hundred and twenty-four beds short of the July average daily population of three hundred and seventy-two, and would result in an increase in your out-of-county boarding, because you would actually, if you're bringing it up to code, decrease the number of beds you have in there. You have too many beds in the building, you have beds in the circulation hallways, the egress hallways, the exit ways of the building, you have bunks, particularly in the female area.
In order to mitigate renovations, what do we do with the prisons that are in there?
Well, that's, that's a different, you know, you obviously would have to, and that, that cost is not taken into account there. I think a lot of these, we could work around population, but you'd have to at least evacuate one housing unit at a time, or something like that. Okay? In July of two thousand and thirteen, the average daily population of county was three hundred and seventy-two inmates. With a current capacity of two hundred and sixty-two beds, the county boarded over a hundred inmates per day at an average cost of sixty dollars per day. This per diem does not include medical costs, transportation costs, and processing costs. Remember, when you're boarding an inmate somewhere else, you're doing all the heavy lifting. You're bringing that individual in, fingerprint, photo, ID, figuring out who you've got, what they are, doing some evaluation, medical evaluation, medical screening, processing that individual. And then, maybe, you can send them to another county, or more likely, you're holding that individual for court, and you're trying to send sentenced people to other counties. But in either scenario, you're doing a lot of the work associated with housing that inmate, and incurring a lot of the costs associated with housing that inmate. And those costs don't go away when you ship them out. You still have the treatment staff, the program staff, the, the staff to determine what that inmate's offenses are, what their needs are, what their security classification is, so that you know what you've got. Boarding costs for July alone were over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The needs assessment. So, that's the situation, you've got an overcrowded prison, you're not alone, okay? Prison population, county jail population in Pennsylvania, has risen at a rate of over four percent across the board, in every, in statewide average for counties, county jail, since nineteen ninety-four. Four percent a year increase in county jail population since nineteen ninety-four to today, four percent a year, okay? Your average daily population has actually increased more slowly than that, okay? Your average has been less than three percent over the last ten years, but over four percent over the last five years. So, in terms of your growth compared to statewide averages, you're pretty normal. You, you should expect, you can expect what has been happening to continue to happen. So, with that, we have to figure out where you are and where you're gonna be with regard to prison population. This is the prison population data, average daily population by month, for every month, going back to two thousand and three. We take that data, two thousand and three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and we get to two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, and you see two thousand and thirteen, this number right here, average daily population for the year. The average daily population for two thousand and thirteen is three hundred and twenty-one inmates. When you've got two hundred and sixty-two beds, you only have one thing to do with those other eighty-odd inmates, and that is, send them somewhere else, okay? That doesn't address, that's the average for the year, okay? But within the year, there are peaks every year. For an entire month, in July, you had three hundred and seventy-two inmates, okay? So, when we're dealing with this population data, it's, it's always compiled, average daily population is what it says it is, it's the average daily population, but it's an average, but you have peaks and valleys in that, and you have to take that into consideration. We've done some evaluation of your, of why your population has grown, okay? And are you doing something unusual compared to other fourth-class counties, or compared to other counties in your community? And there's a few things, a few trends that, that we can know. First of all, you do have a lot of DUI arrests, okay? Probably not surprising, not unusual, and you're not way off the chart with it, but you have, let's say, more than the average fourth-class county. Some fourth-class counties have more DUIs than you, than you, others don't, okay? So DUI arrests is, and, and this is not unusual, in county jails, DUIs is a real issue that drives some of your population. You have a lot of arrests in general, partly driven by DUIs, but when I look at your Uniform Crime Report, you have some pretty serious crime issues associated with a variety of issues. So, you are arresting a lot of people. Importantly, this incarceration rate per arrest, how many people are in jail for every arrest you make, you're actually below average. That's a good thing, in, in terms of controlling your jail population, okay? You are not locking up a lot more people that get arrested than your neighbors, or the other fourth-class counties, or Pennsylvania counties as a whole, okay? So, you don't have some magic silver bullet where you can turn a switch and say, "Well, we're just gonna change our policy on that," because you're pretty much already controlling your population pretty aggressively as best you can with the facilities you've got. And I think that's being driven, frankly, by the fact that your jail is so overcrowded, and there's at least a subconscious effort on everybody's part to try to get people through the system as quickly as possible, try to process people, try to let people that are qualified to go out on electronic monitoring or other alternatives to get them out of your jail, because you need the space. There's a risk that this county faces, okay? And that is, going forward, if you build enough states, you're gonna have to discipline yourself to not fill it up, okay? That's, and, and I know there are programs, you've got a day reporting center being developed, uh, your district attorney is, is working on different alternatives, and I want to encourage you, because I'm making some pretty, pretty, uh, uh, important projections on your population, and it's very important that you, in fact, listen to this message, and that is, you've got to continue the effort of reducing your county jail population in accordance with the expectations of the community, in accordance with the standards of the courts, but don't lock people up that you don't think, that, that the community doesn't demand, because if you do, your population will skyrocket. This is your population data, this, this, this string of numbers here is your population over the, the ten-year period. Over that ten-year period, you increased twenty-six point oh five percent. Your population of males went from eighty-nine to eighty-six, or eighty-seven percent, that's pretty normal. Uh, crime is becoming an equal opportunity event, and there are more women going to jail than were going a few years back. So, so you've got still about, today, about fourteen or fifteen percent of your population is female. You have peaks, your peaks are well over ten percent, that is, in your yearly average daily population, your peaks are typically more than ten percent of your yearly average daily population. So, we've gotta take that into account. And also, in prison planning, we have to take into account the diversity factor, okay? You can't put a female in a male cell. You can't put, um, a juvenile offender in the main housing unit. You have to have space available in the facility where, where you need it, for the kinds of inmates that you need to have space for. So, that diversity factor of eight percent, so whatever your average daily population is today, we would say you need eighteen percent more beds than that to handle your peaks and your classification requirements. If you take the two point six one percent per year, which is what you increased over the last ten years, and you project it forward, you get three hundred and sixty-four beds in five years, four hundred and six beds, average daily population in ten years, four hundred and eighty-nine beds in twenty years. If you take the, the trend over the last five years, which is more like the rest of Pennsylvania, the last five years at four point eight percent, you get bigger numbers, you get three hundred and twenty-two beds, three hundred and ninety-nine in five, four hundred and seventy-six in ten, six hundred and thirty in twenty. When you add your peaking and your classification factors, these numbers get bigger. It's our policy to recommend the minimum amount of space that we can statistically justify, because the, if you build it, they will come scenario, we want to keep the pressure on the system to keep performing as you are, in terms of keeping people out of the system. Jail is an expensive alternative to, to other options that are available to you, sometimes the only option you have, but nevertheless, expensive. So, rather than using the higher projection of four point eight percent growth, it's our recommendation that you design to a ten-year average daily population based on the two point six one percent growth, which yields four hundred and six beds. When you add your, your peaking factor and your diversity factor, you get a need in this county for four hundred and eighty beds ten years from now, okay? You can build to a five-year plan if you want, make it expandable, but it takes three years, two, three years to get a facility online of any kind, so normally, we're recommending a ten-year plan. If you don't, if you're not successful in implementing the programs that you've already begun to implement, the day reporting, electronic monitoring, one, one notable thing is, you don't have work release. It's unusual, very unusual that you don't have a work release program. The reason you don't is, you don't have any way to function with a work release program. The reason you don't is you don't have any way to function with a work release program. Work release inmates go out in the community, they work every day, they come back into the jail, they bring things with them that shouldn't be in the jail, and you don't have any way to keep them separate from the rest of the population, you'd have all kinds of problems. So you don't do it right now. But that's an alternative that you should be trying to do. And I'm sure your, your courts and your district attorney would, would, uh, would like to have a program that would give them that flexibility. Okay? So if we, if we take this four hundred and eighty beds, and we say, okay, now, in order to operate a four hundred and eighty-bed prison, what do we need? We need food service facilities, medical, classrooms, all the things that go, that, that need to be in a prison. You develop this, which is a functioning area summary. This is a listing, that's all it is, it's just a listing of the rooms you need to operate a four hundred and eighty-bed prison. And it goes on, and you get a total building area of ninety-eight thousand square feet. That's what you need. Your existing prison is thirty-three thousand square feet. Okay? If you could make perfect renovation and utilization of your existing prison, you'd still need, you'd still need to triple the size of it. Okay? So this is the square footage, and this helps us drive costs. Summary of options. Okay? What, what options does this county have available to it? We've identified three. There might be, there might be more, and if somebody comes up with one, we can surely put numbers to it. Option zero, the no new construction option. Option zero. Keep the, renovate the facility to meet code, get the two hundred and thirty-nine beds that you can get out of it and board the rest of the inmates somewhere else. That's option zero. Option one, additions and renovations at the existing site. Come up with a concept where you add to your existing jail, you utilize what you have, and get the four hundred and eighty beds you need. Option two, develop an all-new facility on a site to be selected, build ninety-eight thousand square feet, solve your problem long-term. So those are the three options. In order to make a decision, you need to know what those options cost, not just in terms of construction cost, but in terms of operational cost. What is the cost per bed, per day? When you're dealing in prisons, it boils down to that simple thing. What's the per day? Does it cost us more to house our own inmates than to ship them out somewhere else? Okay? If it doesn't, keep shipping them out. It's inconvenient, but if it's less expensive, you should continue to do it. Okay? We've developed drawings of these options. Option zero, of course, there's no drawings, it's the existing prison, nothing happens to it, you just rent it. Option one, this is the old prison, right here, and you can see the kind of addition that you would have to do. You'd be into the parking lot, you'd have to build a parking structure, you'd have to move the boiler building, um, but it's physically possible to build it, and it's physically possible in the, in the future to expand it on the county property. But it's tight quarters. Okay? And the plans of that, we've gone through, just to prove it out, just to determine how big it would have to be. In this option, each housing unit is twenty-four cells, forty-eight beds. Remember that. This, this option has forty-eight bed housing units. Okay? And it's multi-story, three major housing levels with all the support space. The colors are just coded to show booking and, and control, the red's control, and housing is blue, and corridors are yellow, and, and so forth and so on. Just, and again, this is a concept plan, this is not a design, this is a concept plan, to show you, is it physically possible to do something on your existing site? And it is. Then if you were going to choose a site and build a new facility, it might look something like this. You'd need fifteen acres, thirteen to fifteen acres of land, room to expand, housing areas, support areas, the public area, intake, and so forth. Again, this is not a design, it's a concept, to help us arrive at a cost of what it would be to do this. And this is what that concept plan looks like. And each of these housing units is eighty beds. Now what's interesting about that is, when you have a forty-eight bed housing unit and an eighty bed housing unit, the staff to supervise it is pretty much the same. Eighty beds is sort of an optimum size. We've done, a lot of eighty bed housing units out there that, that you could go visit. It's sort of an optimum size in terms of the staff-to-inmate ratio. You can operate this two eighty-bed unit with an officer in a secure point, and an officer, either an officer in each dayroom, or at night shift, when everybody's in lockdown, one officer roving. We've, you know, we're not gonna tell you how to operate your jail, but we've seen other jurisdictions operate that kind of housing unit with that kind of staffing pattern. Okay? That becomes important. The one on the, option one, on the previous, this smaller housing unit, you still have the secure officer here, you still gotta have presence for direct supervision in the dayrooms, so it takes more staff per bed, more staff per inmate to operate option one than option two. Okay? And what you'll see as this unfolds is, staff is everything. The cost of staffing your jail will be seventy percent, sixty-five to seventy percent of the total cost of the jail of operation, just the staff. The food is a small piece, the medical is becoming a bigger piece, but it's a small piece. The debt service to build it is a small piece compared to the staff. So, I'll get to the staff. With those options, we did a capacity analysis, each, the, the existing option zero has two hundred and thirty-nine beds, option one does have four hundred and eighty beds, which is what you need, and option two has four hundred and eighty beds, which is what you need. And this is the heart and soul of what we do. This is, this is what tells you what's the right decision. And we're not gonna tell you what the right decision, you're gonna read this and, and you're gonna come to your own conclusions. Okay? Your current staffing pattern, this is based on your vacation, your sick leave, your staffing data. Okay? To, 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 to staff a single post, a post is someplace where there's gotta be staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. To staff a single post in your staffing, in your staffing model, requires five full-time employees. One post, one place in the jail where you need a staff, takes five full-time employees. Okay? That's not unusual. That number ranges between four point eight-five and five point one. I've never seen one higher than five point one, I've never seen one lower than four point eight-five. Okay? You're right in the middle of the pack. Takes five people for every post. If we develop a solution, like option one, that requires two extra posts, because they're smaller housing units, we're creating ten jobs. That's good for job creation, but it's bad for your operating budget. So what we do is we do a staffing analysis based on your staffing patterns, based on what you historically do. This is the staffing pattern of your jail today. At, at, at the time, we went, interviewed the warden and the deputy warden of, of security, these are the posts you have, this includes the annex, and to operate your jail today requires sixty full-time equivalent employees. Now you don't have sixty correctional officers, you have more than that, because many of them are part-time. Okay? But it, it, if you, if you made, if everybody was a full-time employee, and you had no turnover and no training time, and everybody was doing their job every day, it would take sixty people to operate your jail today. This staffing number is consistent with the budget that you adopted. However, in the last several months, in response to the additional inmate transports and the overcrowding in your facility, you have, you have hired an additional fifteen part-time correctional officers. So in addition to the boarding costs now, you're also incurring additional staffing costs here. Remember, I said you're doing the heavy lifting here. All those guys are doing is babysitting. You know, they're getting sixty dollars a day to watch your guy watch TV. Okay? But you're doing all the work. So those additional, those additional correctional officers aren't in your budget right now. So in addition to your, your boarding costs, you're gonna see your, your operating costs go up associated with that. Option zero, we have created a staffing pattern that shows exactly the same staffing pattern as what you have in your existing jail. We added a records lieutenant, because we believe that when push comes to shove, as your population grows, you're gonna need an additional staff person in that area. And we have added the transport staff to the mix that you, that you've essentially already hired, but that you will need to move these inmates around. Okay? And that gets your staffing number up to eighty-four point seventy-two staff. And again, these are using your relief factors, your shift relief factors, your vacation time, your holidays, everything that you do. Option one, on your existing jail site, on your existing site, the operating, I've evaluated those housing units, and option one requires ninety staff to operate. So it's less efficient than your existing jail. Of course, you've got your boarding costs on top of your existing jail, and we'll get to that. Option two can be operated efficiently and effectively with seventy-one staff. Okay? So, so you've got three different staffing patterns, and your boarding costs that you have to evaluate. I also did, that, by the way, these are projected for that ten-year population of four hundred and six, the average daily population. When you reach four hundred and six beds, this is the staffing you will need in option zero, option one, and option two. Now next year, you're not gonna need four hundred and six beds, hopefully. Okay? So we also did a first year of operation, average daily population for option two. What happens in two years? What does your staffing look like? And there's one housing unit that you'd be able to not occupy, and your staffing is slightly less. And that becomes important when we start comparing options going forward. So that's your staffing analysis. Now, the real question is, what's it cost? What's it cost to build and operate these options? I realize this is difficult to see, but this is your current budget. This is your line item budget. Five million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Unfortunately, you've got more staff than this budget had, and you are paying this year over a million dollars in boarding costs. Next year, we project that you will be boarding an average of a hundred and ten inmates. And this will, this will, this budget here will show you what happens next year. The way we build this budget is we take your, your operating budget, and we take the line item for food. What is food a factor of? Food is a factor of how many people you're feeding. So food is a factor of how many inmates you have. So the food cost in your facility is one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars per bed, per year. Okay? So when you increase your number of beds, the number of inmates, your food costs are gonna go up, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars per bed. Okay? On the other hand, staffing is a factor of what your staff structure is like, and we have essentially a cost per staff of salaried staff and a cost per staff of union staff. Okay? So what we can do with this kind of budget model, these are our unit costs, is we can take these units, food is inmates, utility bills is how many square feet of building we have, um, staff is how many posts we got. We take those and we project budgets forward for each option. This is your existing condition, this is what you're really gonna do next year. Okay? And what you're really gonna do next year is probably go over the two million dollar mark. In fact, if your average daily population is, is, uh, requires you to board a hundred and ten inmates, it's real simple, you take a hundred and ten times sixty dollars a day, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and you get two million, four hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Now it might go up or down a little bit from there, but that's the right analysis. Okay? So if you take your, your current budget and you add in the two things that, that have changed since your current budget was created, which is you have transport staff, essentially, and boarding costs, your budget next year is gonna be eight million, four hundred and three thousand dollars, not five million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Okay? Ten years out, what are these three options gonna look like? Ten years out, when you have an average daily population of four hundred and six, the operating budget of option zero, which includes boarding inmates and big numbers, is over ten million dollars. The operating budget of option one is seven point seven, seven point eight million dollars. And the operating budget of option two is six point four million dollars. What's significant about that? And twelve, and by the way, in the first year of operation, got off page there, in the first year of operation of option one, your budget will be six point two million dollars. Okay? What is, what's significant about these numbers? And this is just operating cost, we haven't got to construction cost and how that gets factored in. But just operating cost, the projected operating budget for the next twelve months is one million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars higher than the projected operating budget for option two in the first year of operation. This option is one million, nine hundred thousand dollars less expensive to operate than this option. In one year. Okay? In ten years, the annual operating budget for option zero, right there, will be four million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars higher than the projected operating budget, this operating budget, for option two. We're talking big numbers here. What drives that? Staff. The sta, and, and, and boarding costs in option zero. The staff to tran, it takes more staff to move those inmates around the state of Pennsylvania than it would to watch them in your own jail. You've got five inmates here and eight inmates there, you're running a taxi service with enough personnel to operate a jail, and you're paying somebody else to watch them. That's a problem. That's why these numbers are so remarkable. That's the operating side. Now we gotta get to the construction cost side. We did that analysis of your existing building, to get your two hundred and thirty-nine beds, you gotta spend between seven point four and eight point six million dollars just to continue to operate your jail. You don't have to. Okay? I mean, everybody can see, you could just continue to do what you're doing and wait for the lawsuit to happen. Okay? And then you'd have a different line item in your budget associated with defense. Okay? And that's not what you want. You'd, I, we've, we've worked on facilities for communities and states who have lost that lawsuit. The state of West Virginia lost one lawsuit in one county jail, and it closed all of the county jails in West Virginia. Under court order, federal court order, they were required to spend whatever it took to build all new regional county jails throughout the state of West Virginia. There's one of them not an hour from here. Okay? We worked with the state of West Virginia. What you don't wanna do is design your jail under the direction of a court master. Nothing against the court masters, but his last concern is your budget. His only concern is that you do what the court has demanded that you do. Okay? You don't wanna expose yourself to that situation. So option zero gets you no new beds. Option one, pretty expen, whoop, option one, pretty expensive, thirty-four to forty million dollars. This includes construction, escalation, contingency... This includes construction, escalation, contingencies, inspections, design, engineering, construction management, everything that could go into constructing that option, and it's thirty-four to forty million dollars. And option two, same thing, all new construction, contingencies, soft costs. Only thing that's not in here is, is land cost, site acquisition. Okay? Twenty-seven to thirty-one million dollars. All three of these, you know, that's a lot of money. There's no, no two ways about it. So we gotta take that, and we gotta figure out what that means to your operating cost. The debt service, using four and a half percent a year, thirty-year financing, which I think is pretty conservative right now. I had some discussions with the financial advisors yesterday. Uh, I think that's a pretty, pretty safe bet that you could finance at something like that number. The debt service of option zero is five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars a year. The debt service of option one is two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. And the debt service of option two is about two million dollars a year. I've used the highest, the higher number on these construction ranges. I used the big number. Obviously, you'd try to achieve the lower number. But I've used the big number for comparison purposes so that, so that I don't make it look like I'm trying to make some outcome happen. I'm using the worst-case scenario on cost for the comparison. And you take that and you add it to your operating cost. And you, you, let me back up there. I'm breaking it down again to a per diem, a cost per bed per day of the debt service on that facility. It's real simple. You know, the, the do-nothing option, zero option, costs three dollars and eighty cents per bed per day to fix it up to meet code. Option one costs eighteen dollars and three cents per bed per day. Option two costs thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per bed per day. You take those numbers and you add them to the operating costs that we do, that we showed you in that big spreadsheet. And option zero is seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents per bed per day for operating costs and three dollars and eighty cents for new construction or for renovation costs, total seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents per bed per day. Option two, same thing, or option one, same thing, total is seventy dollars and sixty-five cents a day. Option two, same thing, forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents operating cost, thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents debt service, yields fifty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents per bed per day. And if you take that number and you multiply it times four hundred and six beds, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, which is what's gonna, that's your budget. It shows that option zero's cost, when you reach four hundred and sixty bed, four hundred and six beds of average daily population, option zero is gonna cost eleven million, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year to operate. Option one is gonna cost ten million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year to operate. Option two is gonna cost eight million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars per year to operate. The annual cost of option zero is two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars less than the annual cost, I'm sorry, greater than the annual cost of option two. Option two is two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year, less expensive in total cost to the county than option zero. Option two is also two million, one hundred and nine thousand dollars less than option, option one, the renovation option. So if you take those numbers and you look over the thirty-year life of a bond issue, the cost to the county of doing nothing is eighty-five million dollars. It will save you, and this, I, people aren't gonna believe this, people are gonna say, where does he get these numbers? You've just watched where these numbers come from. These numbers are not mysterious, they're not hard to find, they are your actual cost applied to what you, what your options are. And the reality is that this county will save eighty-five million dollars over the next thirty years if you act. That is my presentation. Open to questions from the prison board?
Let me make a comment, uh, to folks. I, I wanna thank Tom for, uh, for making his presentation in this manner. You know, I've, uh, everybody has seen, uh, economic studies before. I think he's done an excellent job of, of laying the background out for us. So it's, it's quite clear where, where these numbers come from and what the results are. And it's, it's, it's not unlike prison study that we've already had done, uh, in June two thousand and one, where, where the, uh, in, in back twelve years ago. We've, we've seen projections, and this is a study that was done in two thousand and one by Carter, Carter Goble Associates, which I'm sure is a very reputable, uh, uh, company, just like Crabtree Rowball. In two thousand and one, uh, we had, uh, similar projections, uh, today that the, uh, projections in two thousand and five would be two hundred and ninety-two inmates, county inmates, two thousand and ten, three ninety-five, two thousand and fifteen, five forty-one, and twenty-twenty, uh, seven fifty. So, you know, even twelve years ago, uh, the study is, is on track with exactly, uh, where we are today. So unfortunately, nobody acted. So, and what that has, what that is doing is, is driving up our cost. So I can understand if, if we would've projected those costs for two thousand and one, the way, uh, Mr. Crabtree has just done, the numbers would be almost like that. So, and, and, and I think the significance of this is if we just do nothing, if we don't make a decision, it is going to cost the county, as Mr. Crabtree pointed out, eighty-five million dollars over the next thirty years, in addition to what our, uh, what our budgets is gonna have to be. So, uh, I think it's, and I would encourage, uh, additional questions from the, from the prison board today, uh, Mr. Crabtree and, and his study, because I think it's quite clear, uh, what the, uh, direction we need to go in to save the county money, to make the burden as, as less as possible on factor. In fact, uh, if, 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 in this scenario, uh, if we actually do nothing, we are definitely gonna have to raise taxes to cover these costs. Where if we make a decision today, with the, with the revenue streams that we have currently coming in, and, and actually some, uh, a new revenue stream that would be online next year, uh, we won't have to raise taxes. So we can fix the problem, not raise taxes, and, 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 you know, go forward with a much more cost-effective, uh, process than what we're going now.
I just, I would just like to say, I was present during that study in two thousand and one, and I think what Mr. Embry is trying to say, if some action would've been taken then, we wouldn't be here today, and the jail would've been paid for. Uh, I think over the last thirty and a half years, I've moved fifteen thousand prisoners, one and a half men, and I would like this time to commend commissioners who took action, the people who did the study, the study group, I think they did an outstanding job. I think they need a pat on the back for taking some kind of action. Like I say, we could say they're gonna do nothing, let our children worry about it thirty years from now, or we do something now to actually save the county money. Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Your eighty-five million dollar number at the bottom of that illustration, is that the difference between option zero and option one multiplied, or option zero, option two multiplied over the thirty-year amortization?
That's exactly what it is. Obviously, the difference in year one is gonna be slightly less than that, but the difference in year thirty is gonna be slightly more than that. So that's a simple, straight-line projection of thirty years of that cost, because that cost is ten years out. So the first ten years is lower, but then the next twenty and thirty, it'll be at least that number.
Is that strontical?
It's, it's, the numbers are mind-boggling, and, and, but the reality is, the cost associated with the additional staffing that it takes to move these inmates around, and the per diem that you're paying somebody else to do the easy work, is, is the difference in these costs.
Do you maybe elicit the point of per diem for the public a little bit better? What per diem cost actually? You show numbers up there, seventy-six, seventy-one?
The, the seventy-six, seventy, and the fifty-seven is the cost per bed per day of building and operating that option. So in order to get to this number, you take that number, times four hundred and six beds, which is how many we project you will, how many bed, how many inmates you will have in that year, ten years out. You take that number, times four hundred and six, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and it yields the number in the yellow box.
And that's not in addition to our, our current budget line item? That's in association with our budget as well, correct?
Well, option two at eight million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Now, I gotta go back to...
Our, our current budget line item, I think, is five million and something.
Right. So, so this represents the five million dollar.
That's what I was trying to...
This replaces that number. Let's see, I, I, I had it there. Next year, that five million dollar number is gonna be over eight million dollars.
Yes, I remember that. And it's gonna go ten, ten million now.
Because of boarding costs and transport costs.
Right.
Okay? And you're already seeing it. You've spent a million dollars this year. So unless you get some remarkable event that reduces the population of your jail, you, that's what you're dealing with next year. So that, that first-year operating cost out here, or that total cost, is comparable to what your budget's gonna be next year. And that's ten years out. So, I mean, it sounds too good to be true, to be honest, but it's not. It's, it's a fact that if you act, three years from now, you will be spending less on your jail than you're spending this next year, including the debt service to pay for
Anybody else have any questions, Matt? I can tell you personally, the state counties that Crabtree pays for, County's additions and Green County's additions, they won't be going to it, because we've already built their additions over past several years, more than paid out by the prisons. I used to get calls, uh, monthly from county commissioners from, uh, both Washington and Green, wanting to know how many prisoners were settled. They built, they built their additions already at our expense. Anybody else have any questions? Public, anybody? I'm gonna go into public commentary after this, but if you have any questions to this gentleman?
I just have one. There were rumors and comments, uh, that you, that my readers, that there was another facility that was shut down in another county that's still there, and I don't know what kind of shape it's in. How much was, how much time was spent in looking at that and just using it as a rental at the total facility, and just giving them a check?
I think the facility you're talking about is the old state prison in Hayburg?
Uh, it's a, it's a, SCI.
SCI. I happen to have been the architect that did the renovations to that building twenty-five years ago. Okay? It's an old state prison. It has a couple of new housing units. It's not well-suited to your needs. Okay? The housing units are difficult to supervise. They're the old, looks like movies of a prison, you know, the old Alcatraz, double t, double rows of cells. So I haven't done this level of analysis of it, but I'm very familiar with the facility because we did the renovations twenty-five years ago. Now, the fact that the last renovation was twenty-five years ago also tells me that it would need another renovation. There is a reason the state closed it.
I understand.
You know? And, and that is, it's expensive to operate.
But I'm just curious, why that option? Was a third of the pursuit yet a cost?
Yeah, I, we haven't been asked to look at that option, but we could. I mean, it wouldn't...
I wasn't asking you to do it, I'm asking...
Primarily the reason, primarily the reason, sir, uh, that, that we, and we did look at that. And, and the information that we got back from, from the state was that, uh, the reason they closed it because they cannot utilize the new modern supervisory techniques, so that drives up the staff, and, and so was, uh, inefficient to operate, plus, as...
Yes, that, that's a, you just wouldn't, with a facility of that type, you wouldn't get the kind of efficiency of supervision that you get in a housing unit, you know, this is the bowtie housing unit. They're built all over the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Okay? State Correctional Institution in Green County, which we designed, Pennsylvania's maximum security facility, has a housing unit that looks like that. Okay? The reason is, it's efficient to staff. That drives, in this business, its staffing efficiency is everything. And, you know, that facility could probably be renovated, but you'd probably end up tearing down all the housing units and replacing them in order to get the staffing efficiency. At that point, you probably could've built a new jail.
But no numbers were run to compare to the numbers you've been... I say, but no numbers have been run by your company to compare to our three options here.
I, I haven't, okay.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I'd like to point out is, uh, it was incorrectly stated in the newspaper that by the individual that, uh, suggested that site, that we could probably buy that facility for a dollar. That, that is incorrect. The, the state is wanting to regain, uh, the state is, is planning to sell that, and they're, and the cost is well into the tens of millions of dollars. So, uh, and that's, and, and the other thing that was incorrectly stated in the paper is that it was an eight hundred and fifty-bed facility. Uh, actually, it's an eleven-hundred-bed facility, so that's way beyond what we would need anyway. Uh, so there's just a number of inefficiencies that, you know, we already, we're already running an inefficient jail. We don't wanna, we don't wanna migrate into another jail that's inefficient to operate. There's too much, there's really, there's too much new technology and new methods, uh, for us to use today. If we're gonna fix the problem, we need to really fix it, 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 the most cost-effective manner we can possibly do. And, uh, so that's, uh, that's why we had this, uh, analysis performed.
Anybody else? The Defense Department of Corrections sets the standards and gives us the rules on how to operate the county prison. They, they come in and they inspect our prison, uh, what we give, how many, a year, and they get, but they want these items fixed. It's just, we put Band-Aids on them, just to pass the inspection. But they could any time come in and just shut our prison down. I have no idea where we're gonna put these people. Jim?
Chairman, one thing I wanted to add with the Westmoreland County prison, there are, I was in touch with the superintendent up there, and, um, there are legal issues that deal with Westmoreland County commissioners, Fayette County commissioners, and the courts in Westmoreland County and Fayette County. There's several legal issues that would basically, at the end of the line, prohibit us from using that jail. And even if we could use it, uh, you've got the transporting costs, you know, from that facility, back and forth... back and forth to Fayette County Court, Chairman.
Anyone else? I'm gonna open it up to public comment, so. If there's nothing else at this time, as the Fayette County Chairman and Fayette County Prison Board, I'd like to make the motion that the board accept the recommendation of Crabtree, Roadball, and Associates to take option number two, which is the most cost-effective savings, to build a facility. I have a second on the motion. Any questions or discussion? If none, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
I have four ayes, one aye. So moved.
In, in addition, I would like to make the motion that, that we accept, or we adopt the Fayette County Fairground Site on the back half of the site as the site that will be utilized for the construction of option two.
I have a question, Department of Commerce, any of you have a second? I have a second. Any questions or discussion?
This site is currently owned, this paper comes at no cost to the county, correct?
It's already county-owned property.
Yeah, it's, it's county...
I just wanted to make that point clear.
Yeah, it's county-owned property. It would, it would save us probably the neighborhood of a million dollars. And, and it's a, you know, it's, it's been evaluated along with about, Jim, seventeen, eighteen other sites?
Total, eighteen, yes.
Eighteen other sites across the county. Okay. Mr., Mr. Rob Slater will, will discuss the same plan for that location, in case anybody has some specific questions.
My name is Rob Slater, President of Slater Engineering. What we did is, we took a look at the, we're having a very property for the back half, specifically to determine feasibility to construct a prison on that property. Crabtree presented us with a typical prison footprint, and we studied grading using available contour data. We're very familiar with the site because we're involved in a, a three-hundred-acre industrial park on this side of Peachton Road. So we, we spoke with utility providers, including water and sewage. We graded the site. This is a preliminary site plan that we developed. We studied off-site utility improvements that would need to be made, onsite utility improvements, grading, parking, onsite fencing, paving, and other items. It, it certainly is feasible to construct the prison on that facility, and the cost that we developed to do that are consistent with the cost that were included in option two of the report.
Well, I, I just have one question. There was something concerned about, it's almost been near there, it's been a week and forty-four years, that's my concern also. If we do, we check, does it have some sort of code?
Yeah, it's a thousand feet away. You know, I can't speak to the applicability or not. I know it is intended to be closed in the, in the near future.
And the existing code says, in our, not code, but in the zoning documents, that a new facility, you can see, now, one house can be away from any existing stores, and you need that criteria to have that facility.
Now, if I understand that, Controller, and Rob, you can speak to this, but from what, my understanding is, building the building, we actually have a clearance of fourteen-hundred, or fourteen-hundred feet.
That's correct.
And so that exceeds the, the...
We can adjust this line to accommodate that distance requirement, so.
And it, so everybody has a reference point. We did walk this site just to, to get an idea of how suitable it is. The area that we're talking about here is downhill of the overhead power lines that really separate the fairgrounds and the parking area from the back of the site. So this is all the way down, over the hill, past the power lines. The next thing down is the quarry.
One thing we do know is, through traffic studies and the work that we did on the other side of Peachton Road, this is an entrance to phase two of that industrial park. The entrance to the new prison would have to plus up with that entrance. It's the optimum location for site distance in both directions, and it's likely the only location where we can get that entrance approved through Pendleton. So it's, it's fortunate that we've done studies and understand what's happening across the road, because it's helped us make decisions on this property.
Thank you. But if you have any questions, go ahead.
It was mentioned that you had many other sites that you considered, and this one was selected. It, it has advantages, I won't deny that. But I'm, I'm always curious when a decision is made on a particular location, and it offhandedly referenced that the others weren't as suitable or whatever. And I asked Sir Zimmerman, I had never seen a list of potential other sites that you guys investigated. He said it was published. I don't, I kinda follow this stuff from the courthouse, pretty much, and I've never seen it.
Yeah, in each one of our, in each one of our prison working meetings, you know, we, we of course invited the press to sit in on every one of those. And so as these, and, and all eighteen of these sites didn't, didn't pop up in a, you know, one time, or even in a single month, you know, that was a result of investigation and, and people providing input over a number of months. So those eighteen sites probably occurred over, you know, at least ten months, I would say. And, and so, and each time a site was proposed, or, or investigated, it, it was put in the newspaper. So, you know, I mean, if, so, you know, it was made public, all, all the sites, and, and the, and the, the site location is, was chosen pretty much on economic grounds, which, you know, we already own the property, so that's a huge savings, I have to admit. The other, the other thing that's pretty important is, is logistically, it's in a really good spot in the county, simply because it's in the, basically in the center of the county, it's right off the Route 119 corridor, which makes access very easy. And since we'll be putting our, a central booking system in, so all the offenders from around the county, you know, kinda have a center point to come to. They get booked, and they, you know, if, if they can't make bells, of course, they go right into that facility. The other thing is, for efficiency purposes, we're going to put a magistrate or district judge's courtroom in, in that facility. So instead of transporting inmates all around the county to the various MDJs offices for hearings, the, we'll have an MDJ come there and have all the hearings right in the facility. So again, for safety, security, efficiency, the inmates for those hearings will, will stay right there. In addition, we're gonna put a small courtroom, not a jury, you know, not a jury courtroom, but a, but a small courtroom for a judge to come to hear plea hearings. So again, don't have to transport inmates. The only time we'll have to transport inmates from that facility to this building will be for jury trials, you know, basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Your Honor, that one week a month, going court week, basically.
We was just discussing with Mr. Landby, of the previous hearing, free trial conferences, alderman's free trial hearings, other matters, and obviously, the defendants have a, a right to attend, and whether we'll be able to have those at the, at that site. My phone says it's a fifteen-minute drive, about eight miles away. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how the logistics would work to have a judge out there all the times that it's needed. It would require some adjustments to the way we currently schedule things.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure the courts will work with the, with the, with the jail to make things as efficient as possible for the county. They've been very cooperative through this whole process, and we certainly appreciate that.
Anybody else on this particular matter?
Yeah, I, I like the location of the fairground. I think it's the perfect location. But anywhere you build a prison, you're gonna have a security, safety concern, anywhere. Okay? What makes a security, safety concern is the security grid. Now, there's three defenses to a security grid. Outside, the outer perimeter of the prison is the first defense. The inside of the, surrounding the prison is the second defense, and inside the prison is the first defense. Now, if you guys are gonna have a good security there, and eliminate all risk to the best that you can do, you gotta worry about staff competency. Okay? You gotta have competent staff to work at that prison. If you pay peanuts, you're gonna get monkeys. Okay? And you cannot have political hires of your staff, okay? If they're not competent and you're not evaluating them, because if you do, then you, you're not gonna have an effective safety, security grid around the prison. It's impossible. And you're gonna have escapes like you did before, and also, the suicide of the inmate Steverson, guard, correction officer supposedly went to sleep, and he hung himself. We do have security concerns, and we gotta eliminate them. Now, one thing I wanna know is, I know that you guys got an estimate of thirty million dollars to build a prison, but I think that you should put in your contract a cap for cost overruns, because your cost overruns can run thirty million, too, and that'd be sixty million dollars.
Uh, this is a question about the back due, and I have a motion on the floor right now that we have to vote on, and under public comment, the board will... This is our, our interpretation about political hires. All applications go to human resource, human resource handling, they're interviewed by the board, and human resource department, which the county's hiring, they're testing their ground screen, they're giving site audit tests, and we eliminated all the political hires in the county circuit.
Well, I have one more comment to add here.
Okay.
Okay? If you did have competent staff, why don't you get, and need somebody to come from the outside and show you how to run the prison, like you did a few months ago? You shouldn't have that need. You shouldn't have nobody come in and take you what, what you can do better, what you cannot do better, okay?
I don't know what you're...
And you had competent staff, you had, as a officer, you had somebody to come in, uh, like Commissioner Reddick, who made that motion, you had him come in, study the prison, show you how to rather run the prison. If you had competent staff, you wouldn't need that to come to your prison. And I understand what you're saying, that by the way, you may have the resources, get the resources.
Okay? But political hires does not fit in this setting, in the present setting.
I'll come back to you, then. We, we need to go on to the celebration of the president. I have one more, I have a second. Any other questions or discussion? And the motion was to move it to the fairgrounds, in case we forgot. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. I have four ayes, one aye. So moved. I will go ahead. Anything else on this? Don't, ladies? If not, I'll go into public comment.
So, any other comments?
I'm sorry?
You, you have your public comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying that political hires gotta be altogether eliminated. Okay? But if you're gonna do political harm hires, make sure your hires are competent enough to serve the prison, to eliminate the safety, security concerns, and can run the prison effectively. Okay? Now, I know how about prison inside is run, because my son spent a year in there as an inmate. Okay? And he tells me all about it every day. Okay? And I know about prison environments and the corrections. Okay? Now, if you're gonna do that prison right, and you're gonna do it proper, make sure you got competent staff that's inside that prison to run that prison, eliminate that safety concern for the elementary schools out there.
I agree with you. We think the same, though. We eliminate all that, their tests, that they include our test scores, their strongly body, and their psychologically evaluated, and the switches and the recommendations made by the board, and human resources.
Do you have training seminars up there before they take office, and...
They go to the board and the corrections firm.
Okay. I just wanna, you know, I just wanna express my concerns about that, Gary.
Doing the board of corrections, we send it to the maximum four weeks.
Well, I just wanted to tell you about the three defenses of the security grid. I'm sure you, I'm sure you're familiar with it, Gary.
Sure.
Okay? And if you're gonna, and if you're gonna eliminate that safety concern about the elementary school, anywhere you build that prison, there's gonna be a residential zone, you're gonna have a safety concern.
Right.
So, but the school is important.
For everybody.
That's right. The school is important, though, because you got children there. Okay?
They're not supposed to be closing the school.
Pardon?
They're thinking about closing that school down.
Well, they close it, that's good for the prison environment, right? And, and surrounding, but you still got a residential zone. Okay? Now, in building this prison, Mr. Adressini said thirty million dollars, or Mr. Saptoski told me that, thirty million dollars. Okay? You're going, you know, I mean, what are you gonna do, build a matchbox? But anyway, you should put in your contract, when you build that prison, when you contract for that prison, a cap on cost overruns, because every time you build a public building, there's cost overruns. You can't avoid that.
Is that something that's kind of mutual, that's why county commissioners control first strings?
But you should put a cap on that. I, I understand you emailed me that several times about the first strings.
I never answered your email.
He says first strings about two, two years ago. But that's right, control the first strings, that's right. But that's, you can't spare a cost. If you, if you build that prison cheap, okay, and you pay peanuts, you're gonna get monkeys, and that prison's not gonna be built adequately enough and strong enough, and you're gonna have problems like they did with the old Walmart up there.
But if, if the city will let you pay everybody, the art, art purchases often, if you're under the United Mind Workers, you're very strong, you know, it's cool, they didn't fuck...
Are they comparable, are they comparable, paid by the surrounding counties, Allegheny County, Westmoreland County, and other counties, Ebercliff?
It's under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Richard, CBA, so that's subject to negotiation between the county and, in this case, this, Mr. Brownfield alluded to, the United Mind Workers of America. The, the salaries, based on what I understand, they are, they are competitive?
Pretty comparable.
Yeah.
Mr. Richard, actually, our per capita income in Fayette County is eighteen thousand dollars. Most of the guards make well more than that, double, if all wanted to have time.
It's for fifteen eighty-six an hour plus benefits, so we can only pay so much.
I'm sure when you build this prison, when it's complete, that you're gonna have a, a, a far better envi, prison environment than you got there at present time. I'm sure of that. And, but I just wanted to stress my concerns about the security, okay, and about competent staff. You have to have competency in your staff in order to run a suitable prison, and protect the environment outside of that prison, in the residential zone and everything.
But if they've done the county commissioners, and the prison board, and other things to do to ensure everybody's safety, even the cameras, extra cameras that we've had installed lately, will be compatible, they will be...
Now, for example, I know you've got cameras around the courthouse, but as for example, okay? If you see through that camera, an incident happening in the parking lot, and you're inside there, and the guy's got a gun there, and a guy in the parking lot is gonna shoot him, can you respond quick enough to prevent that guy from shooting that person? You can't, can you?
Can you, can you walk around the street?
But if you have a security guard out, a security person outside in that parking lot, when that incident's happening, he's right there while the incident's happening.
Well, I can use security guards in a lot of places, but it came to ten forty. I have one man who does walk around the building, and...
Then you need, you need to try to get, you need to try to get some funds in to cover the security and safety of all, of everyone.
Trust me, I've been trying to do that for fourteen and a half years, and I understand commissioners have a budget they have to work in, so I work with what they give me.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Brownfield, but that's what my concern is about the prison, that you're gonna have to have an effective security grid around that prison. You understand, Mr. Kevlin, don't you?
Ted, I understand, believe it, it's all, I'm talking now, the prison working group, that has all been addressed, the security, cost overruns, everything you mentioned has been addressed.
That's good. But in, in conclusion, is either pay now or pay later?
Right. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? If not, I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. I hear a voice. Go ahead.
Hold on, Commissioner. Just bring the machine a little closer to you. Go ahead, Doc.
Mr. Craftery, can you hear me?
Could you speak up a little bit?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Hi. Um, when you gave your thesis, um, there's a number of persons to date out of town where you did your pop, that's your residency, if you did your OCS, where they just called on your, you talked about 2012, um, how, where you, uh, I was, uh, uh, we showed this , um, how the fire here had, uh, when we did the case, um, without, um, the, um, the 2011, um, I, um, just, so that, um, running fire, uh, where it was, where, um, 2015, so, uh, I'm reading that, um, about, um, what, or, um, transportation, well, you know, what you, um, uh, the, 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 uh,[848.12]